Good afternoon. I'm David Plazas, opinion editor for The Tennessean. We have the pleasure today of having Jill Spearing, candidate for District 3 and incumbent in this race, who is running for a second term on the Nashville School Board, with us, as well as Metro columnist Frank Daniels III, another member of the Tennessean Editorial Board. We want to thank you so much for taking the time to meet here with us. And if you could tell us and the public, why do you want to run again? And tell us a little bit about yourself for those who maybe haven't gotten to know you yet.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'm glad to be here and nice to have this opportunity to sit down and chat with you. I'm Jill Spearing, and I'm a lifetime resident of Madison. I have, well, I come from a family of five children, and I have two daughters and four grandchildren. I'm a career educator. I've taught for 35 years, 25 of those have been in metro schools. And as a teacher, and especially early on in my career, there were kids who were falling between the cracks. And because of that, I sought ways to improve my teaching. So I got a master's degree. I ran after a career ladder and was awarded Career Ladder 3 status under Lamar Alexander. And then I took that money that I made the first year, and I financed a trip to New Hampshire. And I studied for three weeks that summer at the University of New Hampshire with top writers and educators across the country, and learned how to teach reading through writing, which was very exciting. So I've had experiences that have kind of supported me to be a better educator. I've taught in schools like Corral, Dodson. I've taught gifted in Percy Priest and Inglewood Elementary. So I've had those opportunities. And then I had opportunities to work with Vanderbilt. And they sent student teachers into my classroom, and we were able to conduct research together. And so I worked on publishing articles on reading and had those published in a national reading journal. And so I was named exemplary educator for all of Middle Tennessee in 2007. And I'm just glad to have the opportunity to be on the other side of the table and serve on the board now. And the reason I'm running again, number one, is I'm real excited about Dr. Joseph. He is like the answer to a prayer, and he brings such enthusiasm to this city. And he is an instructional leader. He also has a master's degree in reading. So we share a lot of common interest in literacy. Also, when I first, four years ago, when I decided to run, we had a myriad of reading programs throughout metro schools. And they often conflicted in philosophy with one another, even in the same school. So kids might be asked to read a passage and comprehend, and then, you know, an hour later, they would be asked to read nonsense words. So it's like, well, what is reading? Is it reading for comprehension? Or is it reading nonsense words? I mean, it was really a disconnect. So when I became a board member four years ago, Dr. Register invited me to serve on a panel with administrators. And we wrote a comprehensive literacy initiative in order to change that dynamic. And the first thing we did was to decide, what is reading? What is literacy? And I remember talking to a board member when I was in the classroom and said, you know, we need a definition that we agree on. And the board member at the time said, "That will never happen." And it has happened, and we do have that. And it helps us to determine what, all these myriad of programs, which ones do we want to embrace in metro schools? Which assessments do we believe are best to utilize to assess the progress of our kids? So now that we have this in place, and it's now in 20 schools, the Commissioner of Education, whom I love, has taken note of what we're doing. When she came on board to the state, one of the first things she did was started to talk to teachers about, you know, what's important to you, what's going well, what's not going well. And she created a literacy council. And the first thing they did was, guess what? Create a literacy definition. And because we were a few steps ahead in that process, she's taken note of what we're doing in metro schools. So she is now at a point of thinking, ah, there may be some things metro schools are doing that we want to expand statewide. So that's another reason that I want another four years. I'm excited about the focus on literacy that has been such a part of my passion in education.
So what is the definition of reading?
Yes, the definition of reading that we adhere to is that reading is meaning-making. It's about comprehension. And phonics and whole word and all the different components are important to that process, but they're used in service to meaning, not the other way around. And what had happened before is we had third grade students that sounded like good readers, but you ask them what they read, and they had no idea. But because they had learned, you know, phonics and whole word and different kinds of isolated skills, they hadn't really put it together as it was. This is about understanding a story. It's about thinking, you know? Reading has a lot to do with thinking. You know, does that make sense? Does that sound right? If it didn't, what are you going to do? And as educators and parents, we often think the only thing to do is what? When a child has difficulty, we think, ask the child to sound out the word. And there's so much more that we can do other than sounding out a word. So we've done a lot of instruction on helping teachers to see and helping parents to see that there's other ways to prompt a child a difficulty rather than just sound it out. Because it's not, phonics is important, but it's not the end-all and be-all. Comprehension is most important.
You were just in a retreat with Dr. Joseph and fellow board members. Could you give us some insight into how that experience was for you?
I loved it. Out of the four years that I've been on the board, this felt like the first time. It was really a retreat. It was very introspective. We had a workbook that we worked through. So we had personal things that came up that we were able to keep personal and certain things that we were able to share. Dr. Joseph was right there, part of the discussion, and sharing his insights, and certainly showed his humanity in this process. And really set the stage for us to learn together and grow together. And this is, I mean, it sounds, when you read the book, it seems simple, but it isn't simple, you know? Thinking about being in the box.
Right, this is leadership and self-deception.
Yes, thank you, yes. When we're in the box, and, you know, and even, as you've said before, Dr. Joseph says, you know, he's in and out of the box throughout the day. It's noticing when we're in the box. And when we, you know, I can be in the box with you and out of the box with David. So it's so complex. And Dr. Joseph is willing and, I think, excited to assign us mentors to help us work through the issues. We can have, you know, an appointment with a mentor one day a month or one day a week. So depending how much we want to get into this thinking process, because it is a new way of thinking. It's a new way of working together. Over the last, you know, 10 years, over the last decade or more, we've had a culture in metro schools that has been, you know, based on fear. Fear, I'm going to lose my job. Fear, you know, my kids aren't going to make the progress. But this leadership and self-deception helps us to get out of that fear-based modality and think about, how do we prepare our students to be successful? How do we work together to ensure success in all of our students?
So you've been, you taught in metro schools for how many years?
Well, 25 in metro schools.
Right. And then you've been on the board for four years. Is it, can you sort of help us understand your thought process in terms of what's different now than was before? Is that good that it's different now than it was before? Or do we have things that we need to be working on still? Sort of just relate your experience as a teacher and now as a board member, and how has that changed your thinking?
Yes, yes. Well, I think it's much better than it was. And of course, there's so much hope right now. So that's part of it. But we also have the entire city rowing in the same direction. Everyone seems to be focused on education. And everyone seems to be pulling together, rooting for Dr. Joseph. And when we have the mayor, we have the council, we have individual people, we have, you know, listen and learn opportunities where Dr. Joseph wants to hear how things are going in the city. He wants to hear from teachers. He wants to hear from parents, from taxpayers, from citizens. And so there's an excitement in the air. And we have, I think we've done a lot of good things over the years. You know, the academies are one example of that. I remember when I was in the classroom, there was a point when Dr. Garcia was Director of Schools, where the elementary schools were some of our best schools, but the high schools were problematic. And that's kind of changed. Now the high schools seem to be leading the way, and the elementary schools have kind of fallen behind. So we've kind of, that pendulum has swung back and forth. But now I believe that we are going to see all students, you know, all boats will rise, that this is a time of progress. And hopefully, I mean, I'd like to see us be the leader, not only of the state, but the nation. And I think that can happen.
One of the discussions that continues to happen is this notion of where charter schools fit within the traditional school structure. And how do you define that debate or conversation in your mind? And how do you hope that the public will grow to understand that?
Yes, that's a great question. As a board member, I have visited many of the charter schools, over 10, about 13, 14 of the charter schools, over the four years that I've been an elected board member. And I have voted for 70% of the charter schools that were recommended for approval. And I think charter schools have a place in our district. Do I think that they're the answer to the problems of the other 90% of the children? No, I don't. I think we need, you know, big-time initiatives that are going to affect, that are scalable to the degree that we need for this time. But charters have played a part, and they have offered parents an option. And there are parents in my district that do choose charter schools and are very happy there.
Do you think that there is a problem, or there needs to be an effort to help? Because in some cases, it seems that there's still some misunderstanding about whether a charter school is even a public school, even though it is. And there's also seeming to be a divide in us versus them. Do you see that as well? And do you see any solutions to that?
That's an interesting question, isn't it? Because charter schools accept public funds, they are public schools. But then you have, there's not the oversight that we have with our regular schools. So it seems like they have more autonomy, certainly. And so in some ways, they do look like a private school. I know in some of the charter schools ask for parents to commit to a certain amount of volunteer time. So you've got parents that choose charter schools who are involved parents. And so how do we, you know, change that to how maybe, how we can learn from charter schools? And I think we have, we are doing that to a certain degree, and not to say that we're doing all that we can. But one of the things that we've learned from charter schools is about student-paced budgeting and giving principals more autonomy. And so we have, we've moved in that direction. The question might be, do, you know, have we moved too far? And I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. Do principals need to earn this before we just give them blanket autonomy? So that's something that I'm sure we, the board, will discuss with Dr. Joseph. Also, another thing that the charters do well is that they have extended time. And that's needed. Extended time for math, extended time for reading. Those are important characteristics that might be difficult to do as a district. Because a lot of parents want their kids to come home after school, and they want time with their kids. However, I visited a school called Pond Gap in Knoxville, Tennessee. And it was, have you heard about that?
I drive by it all the time when I visit my daughter.
Oh, really? Yes. Well, we'll have to have a discussion about it. But I love this school because of what they're doing. It's a community school. Every, I mean, not all the kids that go to Pond Gap, but 100 kids that need support. Stay after school, 100. These are elementary kids. They stay after school five days a week. And they, Monday and Wednesday, they have math and reading. And Tuesday and Thursday, they have art and music. But they're not just staying after school and doing homework. They're staying after school and doing enrichment types of activities. Reading for a purpose, you know, we're going to put on a play, and music that they're going to do something with, you know, some performance. Now, we have to bring the parents in as well. And so they've really kind of struggled with that. But the way they've worked it out is that they have brought in washers and dryers. The parents come in after work, put their clothes in the dryer with the washing machine, and take care of their domestic responsibilities for their families. Then they go to parenting classes. You know, it might be, you know, how to work with, you know, your student at home if they had difficulty getting them to be motivated. Or it might be, you know, how to complete your income tax, or how to purchase a home, whatever the needs of that community are. And then, at 6 o'clock at night, 100 children and many parents sit down and have a meal together. And the meal is prepared by culinary students. So the model is beautiful. And we do have community achieve here. But I'd love to see us expand that to the degree that Pond Gap has demonstrated.
I'm intrigued by your question about whether or not we've gone too far with autonomy in this process, which is a very new process. What's your thinking in terms of, what is the right model for autonomy?
Well, you know, while we were listening to the different candidates for director, that's when it came to my mind that maybe we needed to look at this more carefully. Because some of the candidates suggested that they didn't just give blanket autonomy, that that was something you earned. And, but, you know, we started at the high school level and then worked down to the elementary level. But we did it, from my understanding, as a blanket, rather than which principals were ready to take on that responsibility. And I'm not sure how you determine that, or how the Director of Schools would determine which principals are ready for that responsibility. But I think it's something to look at and to consider.
So it sounds to me like maybe we need some clarity, a definition of what autonomy is? Like, we have a definition for what reading is?
Well, I think, you know, maybe so. I think we know that a lot about autonomy. It's just maybe how much autonomy is a particular principal ready to take on. And I'm sure there are ways to measure a person's ability to take on those responsibilities. I'm, you know, I'm not privy to that. But I think it's worth looking into. It's worth discussing.
So one, in addition to our ongoing debate, discussion around charter schools, we also have, it seems, ongoing debate about what the right level of assessments is within our schools, assessments are within our schools, and how we use our metrics. Can you talk a little bit about where you are on assessments and metrics and the integration into how we're doing it in the school system here?
Absolutely. That's a great question. When you talk to parents, they were, they're some of the first to say, we're doing too much testing. When you talk to teachers, too much testing. The assessments that we use need to be usable by the teacher. It needs to inform the instruction, and it needs to be timely. And of course, the assessments that teachers administer that, you know, deal with the curriculum that's being taught are, you know, that do fill those characteristics. But when we have so much testing at the federal level and at the state level, that doesn't, if teachers can't, one of the things that Dr. Register used to say is that we were working toward not using any assessments that are not meaningful to teachers. Because that's when teachers say, you know, I'm wasting my time. I want to, I want to be teaching. I want to be doing something meaningful with my students. But, you know, I'm pulled away from teaching curriculum and teaching my students because I have to administer this assessment. So I think we have to be cognizant of that. However, I believe that we're in a good place with our new Commissioner of Education. Because I think she's listening. I think she's, you know, traveling across the state, asking those questions, and doing her best to cut down on the testing. The Council of Great City Schools did a study on assessments, and metro Nashville schools were part of that study. They looked at 66 school districts, large urban school districts. And their conclusion was, we're doing too much testing. That's not meaningful. That's redundant. And we must cut that down and listen to our teachers about the importance of using really good assessments that's going to help teachers know how to differentiate instruction.
Are, do we, are we sufficiently using assessments for citizens in Nashville to understand how schools are performing and how the school system is performing against the mission that we expected to have?
That's a great question, too. You know, we have, I've been chair for the last three years of the Teaching and Learning Committee with the board. And one of the things we have, you know, dealt with and tried to wrap our hands around is, what is the definition of success? You know, is, when we look at success, is that a score on an achievement test? What is success? So I know we're going to talk about this with Dr. Joseph. I've already mentioned it to him, and kind of thinking about where the Teaching and Learning Committee will go. But I think we've got to, we've got to have assessments that do. And I think just one assessment doesn't tell the story. One assessment given on, you know, a matter of three or four days at the end of the school year, you know, well, what happens if that child was in a fire? You know, what happens if that child had a big argument with his dad the night before, and he didn't sleep much? I mean, there's so many things that play into these children's lives, and especially with 74% poverty. We've got a lot to think about in terms of what kind of home life they have and what kinds of stresses they have. But if we have a variety of assessments, and then I think we're going to get a clearer picture of what success is. And it'll be, it won't be contingent on one or two days.
You've mentioned the state a few times, and recently, the school board decided to sue the state on BEP funding specifically with English language learners funding. Tell me a little bit about your thought process behind that. Do you think it was, why do you think it was the right thing to do? And do you think you should have waited, in hindsight, for Dr. Joseph to take his position?
I know, that was a question that I had to. How important was that? There was some discussion that it might be easier for this to happen so, before Dr. Joseph came on board, so that he wasn't, you know, the bad guy, as it were. But, you know, when we don't have enough money in the classroom, it hurts, hurts kids, hurts teachers. I know when I was in the classroom, and especially when I was at Kirkpatrick, there were certain books I read to my kids every day, and there were certain books they loved. So they were stealing them and taking them home with them. So we had to think about, how do we, you know, check out books? And so they would take the books home and check them out, or they would get lost. And there was no money in the budget to, you know, pay to
Replace.
Replace those books. So, you know, so they came out of my pocket. And that was fun. But it's a lot to ask of a teacher that's already on a limited pay scale to actually, to continuously draw money out of her pocket to take care of supplies in the classroom. With the lawsuit, the EL population, you know, there's 8 to 9% of all the kids in the state, 8 to 9% of those kids go to metro schools. Out of all the EL students in the state, 30% go to metro schools. So there's a disproportionate number of kids that are English language learners that attend metro schools. And it creates an impetus for us to do what's right by these kids. And, you know, BEP 2.0 was established in 2007, 2005. And yet, and we've gone through some hard economic times, and, you know, that's understandable. But now we're in a place where we're kind of in an economic boom, and yet BEP still is not being funded. So sometimes, you know, it's the right thing to do, to say, we've got to stand up as a board and say, let's do what's right by our EL kids.
So there was lots of discussion about, in executive session, about suing over the $3.7 million of EL funding. At the same time, the city knocked back the budget request from metro schools by almost $10 million. Yet the response has been very different from board members about those two decisions. And I believe that a significant bulk of that $10 million was for reading.
Yes, yes, that's true.
So from your perspective, as the advocate for reading, what's your take on why does the board think differently about $3.7 million in state funding versus a request for $10 million in metro funding?
Yeah, it's hard to go back and say, you know, what other board members were thinking. However, we did have a sizable amount that was added to the literacy budget this year. And so because of that, I really can't complain. You know, I appreciate what the mayor's doing. And the mayor actually had not been out to see our literacy initiative. She's new in her position, and I know she's working toward that. And I know she's interested in really getting to, you know, a firsthand view of what we're doing in literacy. So I believe that we will have that support from the council. And a couple of council members have been, have visited some of our schools to see our literacy initiative. And we want to continue that process. Invite all of the council members out and the mayor's office. And the beautiful thing is that Dr. Joseph, you know, he, I'm sure you've heard this, but I'll reiterate it. He says that if we focus on culture, data, and performance with a lens on literacy, all of our children will succeed. Well, you know, I love those words. First of all, I think culture is extremely important for the district to move forward. And a lens on literacy, everything we do, we need to look at that through the lens of literacy. Are our kids learning? And I have this dream that if we were to put the resources we needed in our elementary schools, and we have the best trained teachers with programs that are research-based, and there's a myriad of them, not just one or two, there's a myriad of them, that fit our definition, what would it be like if all children learned to read at grade level in elementary school? How would middle school be different? How would high school be different? How would this system be different? How would Davidson County be different? I mean, we can really dream about that, because it would be an astronomical difference.
So one of the things that Dr. Register focused on, at least in the last several years of his tenure, was on developing and implementing a solid pre-K system. Vanderbilt, of course, studied that, showed that the children coming out of Vanderbilt, of course, studied that, showed that the children coming out of pre-K were better prepared for school than the control groups, people that had not, the children had not gone through pre-K, yet after three years in metro schools, they had reverted to, to the norm, which, and the norm is not good. What does that tell you about, one, the pre-K initiative, or two, your, your dream about literacy?
Yes. Well, it, it doesn't dampen my spirits for pre-K. What it does make me believe that we need to really think about is, if we can close that gap in pre-K, in kindergarten, pre-kindergarten, and then what happens in kindergarten needs to, you know, be as important as what we did in pre-K. And those first grade teachers have got to really be, you know, working hard, and second grade teachers. So we, we, we can't say that pre-K is enough to get us to third grade and be where we need to be. Pre-K is important to get kids where they need to be in kindergarten, because a lot of kids were not there. But if our kindergarten teachers have students who are at grade level pretty much, but when they come to school, we've gotta keep that momentum going. So it's not, it's not just pre-K, it's all of our teachers. And that's one thing we're doing with our literacy initiative. We have a program called Literacy Partnership, and the partnership is with Lipscomb University. And it's, it's a way of shoring up classroom instruction in literacy. And it's, it's quite good. The professional development takes an entire year to learn, and, and teachers are, you know, working three hours after school, about a couple of times a month where they go through classes. But that's what we've gotta do, shore up our classroom instruction so that all of our grades are continuing that momentum that we've established.
Is that an appropriate way for citizens in Nashville, for residents in Nashville, to look at how metrics and assessments should be used, that we invest in pre-K, we get students to a point, they regress to the mean as they go through the system? And we only know that through, in this case, reading assessments, which is, I believe, the primary target of, of this process?
Yes, yes, I, I think, I think we, we can't stop there. We can't stop there. We, I think it is a, a good measure for parents to look at, but we, we do need, with our, with our literacy initiative, we've got several ways of showing, one is called text level assessment, we, we call them TLAs. And we take the, the child, we start at their instructional level, and their independent reading level, and we see how far they can move up. So if they come out of pre-K at a one, you know, by the end of kindergarten, we expect them to be four to six. By the end of first grade, we expect them to be at an 18. So that needs to continue. And when that is falling short, we know it then. We don't have to wait until third grade, we know it right then. And then we can bring in initiatives and support systems that will help those kids that need extra support.
And in the reading initiative that you've been pushing for, are we seeing that kind of response?
Yes, we are. The first thing, the first thing we learned was that even in some of our high functioning schools, like, you know, our affluent schools, we weren't getting the text level assessments, that they weren't moving at the pace that our low-performing kids, kids were, were moving. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't know what to, what to say about that other than it was appalling. And now that we know that, that's why we brought the literacy partnership in. But we're, again, we're not in but a few schools, about 20 schools. So we had hoped to, we had hoped to have more this year in the budget-
Right.
But it didn't, didn't work out. But one of the things that not only Dr. Joseph, but other candidates said during the, the search for a director, was that our budget should reflect our priorities. And if our priorities are literacy, then that budget needs to reflect, you know, if it's EL, our budget needs to reflect those areas where we think that, that we need to improve the most.
Okay. One of the discussions that's going on is the implementation of the Every Student Succeeds Act. Secretary King, Education Secretary King, was here in Nashville yesterday, and he was on a forum, a roundtable regarding that. What are your hopes and expectations for what that can do for the state of Tennessee and also for the school board?
You know, the, the most important thing that I'm excited about with ESSA is that we will get out from under some of these demands and dictates from, from the federal government. And we are in such a good place with our commissioner of education. I have so much faith in her, and to put the, the, the control back at the state level. And she is, she has the capacity and the desire to work with teachers, to work with parents. And she listens when, when parents say, "You know, I don't understand this, this, you know, Common Core math, I don't understand this," and she listens to that. You know, some, sometimes some of our assessments are biased against one set of, of kids. And so we, you know, she's looking at that. I mean, this is not something that's new to her, she's thinking about all these things. So for the, the, the control, the locus of control to be right there at the state level with our commissioner is, is a wonderful thing. And, you know, I, I think a lot of Lamar Alexander and his work, you know, he was, of course, governor here and started Career Letter Program, and, and has served as the, you know, secretary of education. So he has a lot of expertise that, and for him to be able to pass this, that was, that was pretty, pretty significant, to, to get us out from No Child Left Behind. I even like, I even like the way it sounds better, instead of No Child Left Behind, Every Child Succeeds, Every Student Succeeds Act. So there's, there's a lot of things that, that I still don't know about, I don't understand about the law yet, but I'm studying that, and I think we will continue to do so as a board. But I'm feeling really good about the fact that we will have local control more than we've seen in the past.
And related to, do you have a desire as to how the evolution of vocabulary on education should shift? You know, for a long time, there were struggles over what Common Core really is, and that went away, then there were struggles over testing and assessment. How, how would you like to help reframe that in the, in the months and years to come?
Well, with, with Common Core?
With, with anything related to standards or, or how we look at achievement?
Yes, yes. I, I, I think that the first thing we need to do is listen to teachers and hear what they're saying. I think the vocabulary is extremely important, it certainly is in literacy. If, if we're using different terminologies, the kids will get, kids get confused, and we have, what, 30 some odd percent, 35% mobility, and as kids move back and forth, you know, they, they're really confused, and they may be talking about the same thing, but they're using different vocabulary. So, so that's confusing to kids, and I, I think that, you know, that this is a time that, that we can, we can get excited about the future.
You've mentioned, you've mentioned several different things that you're excited about or enthusiastic about in terms of what metro schools are doing. If you had to pick one thing that you think metro schools is doing well and should not stop doing, what is it? I probably have a pretty good idea of this.
No, I'm saying, you already know what I'm gonna say. I'm, I'm thrilled about our literacy initiative, because I had heard for so long and from so many, it would never happen, and it has happened. And to, to be able to, to know that, I mean, it will, let me say that, that one of the things that happened during budget season this year, budget session, was that some, some board members wanted to decentralize our literacy initiative. And, and, you know, we had worked so hard to, to get a centralized literacy initiative. And so I argued against it with the idea that we have, you know, 35% mobility, and if we're, we're asking our students that are mobile, you know, we want them to learn, and how can we expect them to learn at the same pace if we're, if we've got various programs that aren't, that aren't under an umbrella of, of our, of what our literacy plan is? So they, the board came together and voted to keep our, our literacy initiative intact and keep that centralized. And then when, when Dr. Joseph came, I asked him about it immediately, and he said, "Absolutely, you know, we can't, if we, if we have it decentralized, it will, it will really make it more difficult for children who are mobile to be able to succeed." So, yeah, that's-
That's your one thing.
Yeah, I, I mean, I could give you a few more, but-
But, but you got one.
Okay.
And so conversely, the one thing that if you could fiat it, what would you change or do away with in schools right now?
Let's see. I would love to see parents more engaged. It's one thing.
That you have, that, that you'd like to change or do away with?
Okay, yeah, I, I think it would be parent involvement. How do we, and I think Dr. Joseph will bring an answer to this, because we have been struggling with this for many years, since I was, you know, teaching in elementary school. And, and we've done so many things to try to change that. You know, we have pizza parties, and we have spaghetti dinners, and, but how do we really get parents involved? And one of the things I love about Dr. Joseph is that he wants to zero in on underrepresented populations. You know, maybe we need to, you know, go out and have meetings in, you know, the projects, you know? What he's gonna, he's gonna bring ideas to the table that I don't think we've considered.
Right. Well, what I was, when I was doing some research and having some conversations with Sister Sandra, I was intrigued by her sister's efforts when she was named the first African-American principal of a white school in Nashville. She acted like a charter school leader, went out and met with every family in the, in her school population.
Yeah, yeah. You know, we did that in kindergarten, before children came to kindergarten, we would go to their homes, would write them a letter first, write the student a letter, so they get a letter in the mail and they're excited, then you go to the homes, and sometimes that's easier than, than others.
Right.
But to, to set up a time and to be persistent, and, and to go out and do those home visits, and talk to the parents at home, and invite them to school, and, you know, that's, Sister Sandra is, I mean, she's, she's, she takes, she goes the extra mile.
And, well, and her sister, of course, started the first public kindergarten in Nashville.
That's right, yes, that's right, yeah. She's got the longest-standing charter school.
Yes.
Yes.
First one.
Yes.
Can you tell me about the person you admire and why you admire them?
I can. I am excited to tell you that, that the person that I admire is Lev Vygotsky. He, he, he was born in 1896, and he became famous after his death. The work that he did was actually, actually laid the groundwork for cognitive psychology. And, and the, Dr. Joseph even mentioned Vygotsky during his interviews. And Vygotsky is, is someone that I've learned about in undergraduate school, and, and he has, his philosophies have led my thinking throughout the years. He has a, he's known for ZPD, the Zone of Proximal Development. And what that means is, what a child can do today in cooperation with another, he can do alone tomorrow. So the whole idea is social learning, and how, and it's true with us as adults, it's true for teachers. But even this whole idea of what we, we did on our retreat, I mean, that was a social interaction where we are, we have a more knowledgeable other, the leader. Mike led us through the, you know, the different, the different parts of the book, and then that more knowledgeable other helps us to work through the next process, and then it keeps it going so that we can continue to learn. And that's what we're doing in our Comprehensive Literacy Initiative, that's what we're doing with our teachers, to help them to, to take own, ownership of, of how to reach every child, not let any child fall between the cracks.
Now that you've had your retreat and you've embraced the vocabulary of In and Out of the Box and Self-Deception, as you look back over the four years that you've spent on the board, how does that book inform what happened over the last four years? And how do you think it'll be different if you get reelected?
Oh, I think it's gonna be very different. You know, it's, it's, when you don't know about the box, you know, you don't, you don't think about these things. But since I've been reading, since I read the book, and even when I started reading the book, I would ask myself, you know, I'd, I'd be reading upstairs, and I'd think, "I'm, I'm out of the box, I'm doing good." Then I'd go downstairs, and I'd talk to my husband, and I was in the box, you know? And, and, and then, so I called Dr. Joseph, and I said, "I'm really having a hard time with this, I'm, I'm thinking I'm out of the box, and then I'm back in the box." And, and he said, "Well, you know, it's something you have to work at, kinda all the time, but the way you work at it is you notice, just notice, ah, I'm judging, ah, I'm, you know, I'm thinking this person's a problem, ah." You know, and then noticing where we are with the box helps us to get out of the box. But it's, it's, I think it takes persistence. So to go back and say, "I probably have been in the box for the last four years," excuse me, but, you know, and, and I'm still in the box quite a bit, but I'm, I'm noticing more often when I'm in the box, and I'm striving to get out. And what that means is thinking about, how do I serve you? How do I help you, you know, do the best article, write the best article for the Tennessee? And how do, how do I serve you in, in writing about the school board? Rather than, oh my, I've gotta look better than my peers, you know, I, I need, I need to show off a little bit so that, so, you know, rather than competition, it's collaboration and working together.
Thank you.
Well, is there anything that you'd like to add that we haven't talked about?
I, I can't think of anything in particular, but I will say, this has been a delightful hour. I've really enjoyed talking to you, and it's nice talking about our passions.
Well, we thank you very much for this. Would you like to tell the public what the best way to contact you is, and perhaps a website, social media, et cetera?
Absolutely, thank you. My website is jillspearing.com, and my email address is jill.spearing@comcast.net, and my telephone number is 562-5234.
Why don't you repeat it with the area code two? Why don't you repeat that with the area code two?
Okay, yes, 615-562-5234. Thank you. No, I need these notes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Spearing. It's such a pleasure to have you here. Thank you, Frank. And to our public, we appreciate you very much. Remember to register to vote. Early voting starts on July 15th, and the election is on August 4th. Have a great day.